Evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. If you'd please stand and join me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public or which it's state.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for the following individuals. Lydia Carney, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Gail Romalt, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Albert Baxter, a graduate and former employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Dr. Jerome Melvin, former superintendent of schools of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you.
President, I'd like to speak about two of these people. Gail Romalt, I knew quite well when I came to the district in the seventies. She was a reading teacher at the high school. She worked mainly AIS with a lot of the students had trouble reading. Phenomenal person and also very much so into the a leader with Sylvia Matusek. The other one I would like to talk about is Lydia Carney. This is difficult for me because when I went to Bear Road, when it was called Bear Road in nineteen eighty-three, I was a third grade teacher and Mrs. Carney also was a third grade teacher. So I worked with her for three years. Phenomenal teacher, taught the basics. Students were learning in her classroom. And what's marvelous, if you read the obituary yesterday, that she was a third grade teacher for thirty-eight years. That's difficult in this, these times. Many teachers change grade levels, but that was her grade level and that's what she did. I will talk about another person later.
We have one presentation this evening, so I'd like to welcome up the North Syracuse Early Education Program. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize in advance, I'm a little under the weather today, so I'm gonna try not to have a coughing fit. I've got water and cough drug. If not, these ladies will take it away, I'm sure. So I'm Dawn Hussein, I'm the principal at the North Syracuse Early Education Program. I have with me tonight Leanne Phelps and Cassandra Courtwright, two of our special education teachers. They are also our BPT co-chairs. And so they will be presenting the BPT part of the presentation and then I will take over the budget portion of the presentation.
Okay, so I'm gonna start just with the demographics of our building. So I won't read the numbers to you, but I'll point out a couple of important points. We have just a slight increase in the number of students we're servicing this year. We're still functioning with fourteen special class integrated setting rooms. So there are fourteen classrooms total. Twelve of them function under an eight-one-two ratio, two of them in a six-one-one ratio. Five of those classrooms are considered full day sections. So they see students for five and a half hours. And then the remaining rooms, we consider half day. And they see two groups of students each for two and a half hours at a time. We have ninety-two staff members this year, a slight increase as we continue to see students' needs increase. We've been hiring new therapists across board, speech, OTPT. We're representing ten school districts this year, so we see students from all over Onadaga County. Seventy-seven percent of those students belong to the district. Our poverty rate also increased about five percent this year, so that brings along some challenges as well. And so we're doing some things in the building that we'll talk about later to support and address those. Next, we'll show you our vision and mission statements. Those check. Overall, we're just working really hard to meet students where they are. At our age level, it's meeting kids, but also meeting families and so kind of work in this full picture play. So students are working through play, working through some new curriculums this year, which we'll talk about in a little bit as well. But supporting them across board in all sorts of ways, both gen ed students and special ed students.
Looking at building goal one, it's focused on our work as a professional learning community. Professional development opportunities specific to the MTSS or multi-tiered system of supports framework have been planned throughout the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We've already had one really great professional development and look forward to some in the future. The classroom teams continue to collaborate to identify and unwrap essential standards while working through the CKLA and the Frog Street curriculum pilots. All instructional staff continue to utilize a standardized agenda template, working agreements, meeting roles, and we house them in a centralized location to enhance communication and meeting efficiency.
Our second goal pertains to graduation rates. Our kiddos, of course, are a long way from that at this point, so we look at the absenteeism in our building. It's of course very important, even at this age, to start building those connections with families so that we're getting kids in school as often as possible and really starting to plug the holes of what might be happening and why they're not coming. So we have a few things in place that support that. Said one of them is really just encouraging families to be part of the school community. So we do have a monthly coffee connection, so families are invited into the building once a month at night. They're provided dinner, books, childcare, and we have a presenter that's different every month. Our PTO is doing great, they're thriving, lots of new programs this year and events for families, one for every season, which is very exciting. Our regular parent conferences, just like the rest of the district. We also have a monthly attendance committee with several representatives from different areas of the building to try and just recognize students that might be absent and coming with chronic issues. So from that, we pull out those students and start to figure out what we can do. If it's calling families, figuring out why they're not coming to school, sending attendance letters, getting our social worker involved. Our goal is to see our absenteeism rate decrease by five percent each year. So right around the same number from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three school year. Yes, go ahead.
One thing I want to add to that, that I think we've told you guys in the past, but the amount of sicknesses that preschoolers get because it's their first time in school. I think our school nurse will tell you that it's ten to twenty colds per year. And so our absenteeism rate may seem higher than other, other buildings. But I think a lot of it is that first exposure to other kids in an academic setting and the germ path is great, so.
Yes, yes, the kids share lots of it. And then our third goal is looking at our reading and math proficiency. So our goal here, we're looking to demonstrate a ten-point increase in the speed dial assessment scores from September to June. The speed dial is an assessment that we use across the building for all students. That looks at foundational skills, so things you'd expect, colors, numbers, letters, sounds, but also problem solving, fine motor, those kinds of things. So all of our teachers are using that, assessing as many students as possible. In a minute, I'll show you where we are looking at that ten points. But here's a few things that we're doing just to really enhance students' learning. So we are using Hagerty, it's been several years now. The kids are doing great and we're hearing good things at the kindergarten level that our students are bringing so much more than they used to as far as their phonemic awareness, so that's really exciting. This year, we're piloting two different curriculums. And we will come in conclusion to one by the end. So we are piloting CKLA in half of our classrooms and a program called Frog Street in the other half. And really kind of comparing the two, working in our PLC groups to figure out which program is the best fit both for our building and for the New York State preschool standards. So that's been an exciting process. As Cassandra mentioned, we've had some professional development that's been really great. Working again in that PLC area to make sure we're doing as many things as possible as we can for students. Always have our play included in that, of course. It's so important at this level that they're getting that in. And CKLA and Frog Street have both shown that we can include play and continue to build the curriculum in as well. So very exciting there. Our next slide is our scores. The first one you'll see here is our general education students, their scores from September to June. We saw about a nine and a half point increase across the building for those students. So just under our ten-point goal, but we'll take it. And then the following slide will show you our students with disabilities, their scores trending in the same direction, but we're looking about a seven-point-eight for them. So we're gonna hope to continue in that trend.
Building goal four is focused on building emotional competency. So our goal is to provide social emotional support for our students by teaching them the skills they need to regulate their behaviors and develop positive relationships with adults and peers. We've embraced the Second Step curriculum among all of our classrooms. We've benefited from having Lucia Lewis, who is our coach. She's in, still supporting four of our classrooms now as she starts to pull back to work on a plan to get us training our own staff within the building. So last year, we discovered the Handle With Care Behavior Management System for working with children with challenging behaviors. A team of professionals, which has been now labeled as the Behavior Task Force, attended a specialized turnkey training in verbal de-escalation and therapeutic hold specific to the early childhood population. The team is made up of our two psychologists, our social worker, our registered nurse, and our principal, Dawn Hussein. As turnkey trainers, they present the verbal component of the training annually. And we all were just put through that training again on Halloween. Our Coffee Connection events are also presented by our social worker, as Leanne had stated, as a way to provide information and support regarding our social emotional growth and development. One tool that we use in order to measure our children's social emotional growth is the electronic form of the Deveraux Early Childhood Assessment, the EDECA. So if you flip to the next screen, I can show you the data here. We complete the checklist twice a year for each student. The chart shows the growth in each of these areas measured by the EDECA, which are initiatives, self-regulation, attachment and relationships, and behavioral concerns. What we want to see here is the number of students that are in need decrease as the year passes and move to the typical or strength area. So we're looking for that green bar to get smaller while the blue bar, or excuse me, the need to get smaller. So the behavior, excuse me, the area of behavioral concerns is only rated as typical or in need, no strength. And as the graph illustrates, we did see growth in each area last school year. And that brings us to our celebrations. So looking at our celebrations, we have already talked about our professional learning opportunities that are helping us service our children. Our building upgrades, we were given a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from Lsterpy that we are working on putting into place around the building. On our playground, our shade structures have been installed and are used very, very frequently in those hot sunny days, especially during summer program. As Leanne and I have mentioned, that our curriculum pilot is underway and we're seeing a higher level of collaboration amongst the teachers now that we have that strong foundation. Kate DeBodis is the UPK coordinator, has come in and provided a lot of training and support for us in this area. Leanne has also spoken to our new seasonal building-wide events for families. The PTO had a very successful fall festival. And just this Friday upcoming, we're looking forward to our winter wonderland to incorporate our students in another seasonal event. So the sustainability plan, as I mentioned before, Lucille Lewis is working to create a sustainability plan so we can continue to use Second Step in the school with our newer teachers. And we continue to receive Title I funding, which supports our school's social worker. And she is able to implement these great programs like Coffee Connection and our holiday program, which helps a lot of our, our families. Our roof project is completed now, which we're very excited about. And we continue to receive proactive support from our SPO bill route. The next page is just our BPT members. And then I can take any questions you have before we move to our budget presentation? While we can?
Yes.
Yeah, I just had one question. This, this is great. I just was curious if you could talk a little bit about the Frog Street pilot? Because we, we as a board have heard a lot about CKLA, you know, going through all the district, but this is not something I'm familiar with. So I just was curious if you could talk a little bit more about maybe how it's different and what you think is good about it?
So actually, both of these two teachers here are piloting the CKLA, so they're not gonna be. I thought about that, actually. So they are, could, could, they're well-versed in the CKLA. And I can give you a broad, you know, explanation, but a couple of things that we liked about the Frog Street curriculum. It's more of an inclusive curriculum for all subject areas. So there's a math component, there's a science component, of course, the ELA component. It's all based on the science reading, similar to CKLA. But the approach is a little bit different and they also do incorporate the social emotional learning into that as well. So they use pieces of conscious discipline. So we're still using the Second Step in, as well as the Hagerty in both classrooms. But the Frog Street also builds in the conscious discipline throughout. So a lot about building classroom community in a more structured way across the curriculum, so, or across the classroom so that it would be the same, you know, in all seven classrooms that are using it. But I think a couple of things that were appealing was the, the multiple subjects kind of included all-in-one. And the kits came with an extensive amount of materials, so that was appealing also to have it all in one place and easily accessible. And they also build in, there's a three-year-old program and a four-year-old program. And they build in some structures for modifications and things into it a little more explicitly, maybe than CKLA does, so.
Just a quick follow-up, is this for both half-day and full-day students? There's ways that it works for both?
Yeah, we have some half-day and full-day classrooms participating in both sides of the pilot. So, so there's some struggles around that, right? Because our half-day kids are only there for two and a half hours and our full-day kids are there for five and a half hours. So the amount of time that they have to spend on curriculum is drastically different. And so determining like what's the essential that everybody's gonna teach? And then what can the full-day classrooms extend on and the, and the half-day classrooms cannot, right? So.
I'd like to make a quick comment. Thanks for your presentation. And I noticed that you listed play-based learning, which is huge. I mean, I've had been at all levels in education. And the primary level, I mean, I think it's Eric Erickson that said that zero to five, while all stages of development are important, that primary level is huge for kids. So your work is really, really important. It, it sets the foundation and I'm so glad that play-based is part of it because I get worried, being in education, that sometimes we're tracking data too much and trying to cram things down kids' throats and let them be kids and let them play. So I'm, we're so glad to see that in you, in there and keep up the good job.
Thank you.
I think that is something that we struggle with as a building too of, as we keep introducing more and more curriculums and more structure for the students that are clearly geared towards our four-year-olds, typically developing children. You know, our population is much broader than that. And so we're servicing three and four-year-olds and special ed students and general ed students. And how do we meet the needs? And like the lady said, meet the kids where they are. And play is really important to our staff to, to maintain that. And it's, it becomes ever more challenging, I think, as time passes to hold on to that. I agree. You guys ready for the excitement of the budget presentation or you have a question?
Just the, the DECA slide, the Deveraux screening thing. Pull that up with the bar graph.
Yeah, Gillian can grab it for us. I saw your confusion on your face and so I thought maybe I'm gonna try to simplify it a little bit, simplify it a little bit.
I'm still trying to process where I am in Erickson stages of development. They said I'm supposed to have wisdom at this point, but I'm waiting for that.
This graph is really complicated and.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Simple question, is this comparable to what we see as a, as a biomass screener for the higher levels?
Yes, yeah.
I'm just, my curiosity was, and it would take me more time to digest this, but how is it administered at this level? Because students aren't filling out surveys, obviously.
So the teachers are completing a checklist and it's, it's really just them and their teams in the classroom completing the checklist. So it's nothing that the student has to perform in front of them. There's also a parent, apparent option that you can also do. At this point in time, we're just doing the one that the staff fills out, so it's a, it's a staff rating checklist. Yeah, okay. All right, moving on to the budget presentation. So as a reminder to everyone, we are what's called a forty-four-ten inclusive special education program. And as a reminder, our budget operates completely independent from the school district's K through twelve budget, which is why we present separately. Our, our funding mainly comes from these four categories on this slide. The first one is the state and county funded tuition reimbursement rates for our special education students. And these rates that are noted here include an anticipated four-point-three percent increase for this current school year. The second source of funding is for our UPK partnership with the district for the four-year-olds that attend five days a week in either our full-day classrooms or our afternoon half-day classrooms. The third area is the parent-paid tuition for general education students, which can include three and four-year-olds and mostly our out-of-district students as well. And then lastly, we have an additional revenue that comes from federal grants. And in that category, we have the six-eleven and six-nineteen stead car process, which is also referred to as flow-through money. And this year, while of course we're prioritizing our North Syracuse students, we do enroll students from a total of ten different school districts this year. And then another source of grant funding comes specific to our Committee for Preschool Special Education, our CPSC grant. And then the Title I funding that the ladies mentioned earlier, which supports our social worker. And then in addition, we do receive revenue for conducting special education evaluations. This slide represents the summary of estimated revenue. It includes special education, general education, and UPK tuition revenue. Includes the summer and it is specific to this school year. We anticipate the tuition revenue to be just over eight-point-two million. And as a side note, this amount represents tuition revenue, but additional revenue is calculated in the future for the grant funding and the evaluation revenue. Estimated expenditures for this school year are just under nine million dollars, which is an anticipated nine percent increase over last year. And our expenses, as the ladies mentioned, have increased more than expected due to increased staffing in order to meet the therapy needs specifically of the student population that we have this year. And as a side note, the students that we're servicing this year are true, true COVID babies, like they were born in the heart of COVID. And so it, it'll be interesting. like they were born in the heart of COVID. And so it, it'll be interesting to see as time passes if that is really what's impacting or, or not. But it, it's kind of just a curious note that, these are, are the 2000, you know, 2000, 2001 babies. So. This pie chart is just another way of showing you the expenditures. And what I'd like to highlight on this is that over 94% of our expenses are directly related to salary and benefits for our staff. So for other financial thoughts, here's a few updates on things that have been going on. Uh, last year, the state education department had allocated about $2.5 million to study and design a new rate-setting methodology. It was intended to streamline and improve the timeliness of tuition rates for special education students. And then the study was also intended to help ensure that special education providers could continue to provide high-quality services to stu-, to students with disabilities. And then at the end of the school year last year, the state shared that they would be extending the study because they needed more time. So they didn't have a solution, um, to these issues. So we're awaiting more information in regards to the outcome of the study and hope to anticipate something positive to come out of that at the end of this school year. Our tuition rates have not been certified going back to the 2021, 22 school year, which means that although we've been promised some increases over those last few years, nothing has been finalized or set in stone yet by the state. Uh, last year, we were pleasantly surprised to learn that we would be getting an increase in rates for evaluations and for our one-on-one teaching assistance. There, there had not been an increase in that, um, in my time in the district. So over 14 years or so, there had not been an increase in that. Um, and then this year, we also were informed that there would be another small increase in, in those, um, evaluation rates and one-to-one TA, TA reimbursements. So that's a good positive. Um, and we are anticipating a 4.3% increase overall in our special education tuition rates. But as you saw, our expenses are going up 9%, right? So that's a challenge. And then, um, in general, as I mentioned to you last year, really, special education and mental health supports and services for preschool students is really, continues to be in crisis. There isn't enough, right? There's a significant shortage of services across our county and across our state. And the needs of the students have intensified and they require, um, more, right? And so we have, uh, prioritized North Syracuse students, um, and we've increased our staffing, but there's a consequence to that as far as increasing our expenses. Um, we do know though, that if we end up in a, in a deficit situation, we do have enough, um, money in our fund balance in order to cover a shortage. So, um, that's really it for the other financial thoughts. And, um, that really concludes our budget, budget presentation. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
Can I just, uh, say, my daughter's a senior now and she was at Main Street, must be 13 years ago. And it was an amazing program. And just the stuff she learned there honestly carried her through with just helping others and I don't know, it was a great program. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move into our comments from the audience section of the meeting. As always, we welcome, um, members of the community to come and, and share their thoughts with the board. Um, just as a reminder, everyone has three minutes. So first, I'd like to invite up Stephen Beardsley. Turn the mic on, please. Turn the mic on. Yep.
Make sure it's away from my face too, a little bit. All right. Good evening all. Um, I'm just coming tonight to discuss a little bit of the CNS and Liverpool merger for the hockey program this year. I'm the president of Onondaga Youth Hockey, which comes out of Lysander, uh, coached a 14-year-old team. Uh, and just wanted to make it aware, cause I know we had 10 Liverpool players that were selected for this year's CNS team. Uh, hats off to them. I know as a coach and as a president of an organization, you know, coaching decisions and putting a product on ice or the field, whatever it is, matters when you're trying to put a winner out there. So no bones about it. I've, uh, known Coach Jones for a few years now. I have a lot of really positive things to say about him. Um, just wanted to let, see what the chances were of, if 15 kids within our school district between eighth and ninth grade, and then there's three known of seventh graders, they're gonna be coming up next year, interested in trying out and doing the physical fitness test. I've already communicated also with the Midstate Athletic Community Center. We have the option of six ice slots during the months of January and February, three in January, three in February, to almost run like an intramural, one hour a week, just to keep those kids together. Cause currently those 15 players play amongst 10 different organizations between Auburn and Rome and everywhere in between. So some of those kids are driving as far as those areas to play. That was really all it is. Ice at the MAC is 250 an hour. So if it was something that the kids also had to fund to do, kind of like what we did with Ski Club, that would be an option as well. I just wanna see the North Syracuse kids be able to prosper from their own internal organization. I sat in the first meeting in 2001 in the LGI when that team was put together, had the first start as a goalie and the first win as a goalie for the school. So I have the jersey and have the puck, if we want it for the case, from that first win, cause it was a tough season. Um, but I'm just looking for something maybe for those kids. A practice squad is out of the question with 26 kids on a current roster. You really can't interfere with, um, the work Coach Jones wants to do with that group. But we do have some options externally away from that side, um, for these kids that are, again, within the walls of our North Syracuse School District. All I have. I think I'm at my three minutes. So thank you all very much.
Pat Carbone, welcome.
First time I've ever been on this side, that's for sure. Um, just here, uh, to kind of bring a little remembrance to Jerry Melvin. He is, uh, a gentleman that we know just passed away, uh, last week. If you read his obituary, I don't think the page was large enough for all of the things that he did and all the places that he has been. Um, we were fortunate that he was here, uh, twice. Um, I was fortunate, um, to have known him. Uh, I met him at a meeting of the North Syracuse Rotary Club, sat with him for dinner, uh, over about a year. I think I met him in 92. And one, uh, Monday night or Tuesday, whatever, we met. He asked if I would be interested in running for the school board, if I ever thought about that. So, uh, I went home and thought about it and 23 years later, I, I got off the school board. Uh, I just wanted to say that he, he brought a lot to this district. He brought a lot actually to every district, every job that he had. Uh, he, he, he brought, uh, the utmost in professionalism. He brought stability here. Those of you, Mr. Crabtree will tell you, and some of the folks that were here. We weren't a real stable school district in the, in the eighties and, um, early nineties. He brought that stability. And, and the other thing he brought was, was transparency at a level that the people in this district never really saw before. Um, he was kind. Um, he was ultimate, uh, developer of talent. Always looked for talent, always encouraged, uh, young employees to, to, to develop themselves, to get more education. Uh, he was a good, I had a good eye for talent. Many of our administrators, Jerry, almost handpicked. He, he was the quintessential superintendent. On a personal level, he, I met him at a time when, uh, my father was ill and my father had passed a couple of years into my, um, tenure on the board. And he became my surrogate dad. He was that kind of guy. Um, I was fortunate, Michael. Well, you were fortunate. You, you were on the board when he was here. And, uh, he was my mentor. He taught me everything that I know about school districts and board, being on a board and just about school business. And he taught me how to be a professional and he taught me how to be in front of the community. That I'll never forget. Um, I'll miss him. I know all of us that knew him and that worked with him will miss him. And the last thing I had to say, just having his name on the building is, exemplifies what he was to us. What I wanted to say. Thank you.
Move into Board of Education Committee reports. Mr. Thorne, not here, but we have a policy committee meeting coming up, right, Joe?
Yeah, we have a legislative committee, um, meeting on Wednesday. Um, but I wanted to let everybody know that tomorrow, there's a special webinar that, um, Matt, myself, and Paul are going to. And at this, um, webinar, we're gonna get a comprehensive analysis of the election results and their implications for our school, a review of the budget request from the New York School Boards Association and what their legislative priorities are for 2025. And also insights into the upcoming legislative session and what it will mean for our district. It's more of a panel and a lot of people are gonna ask questions. So it should be very good. And we'll report at the legislative committee on, uh, Wednesday. So, um, thank you again for letting me represent our school district with OCMBOSIS. Um, you have a report. If there are any questions, please get it to me. Thank you.
Yes, so I was fortunate enough to attend the Fall Play, Harvey. Um, our students and staff did a tremendous job. Uh, the characters, that, you know, the students actually brought the characters to life. It was a very enjoyable and, uh, engaging performance. And I commend Danielle Rosa and, um, and the students and all, all the staff that helped out. It was tremendous. I know, uh, Mike got to see it also and sat there with Bob and it was very enjoyable. Comment on that. Uh, this Thursday, December 5th, uh, is a half-day for, uh, pre-K through sixth grade. And, uh, there are parent-teacher conferences being held that day and also, um, throughout the week. So busy week there. And then, um, December 5th, uh, there's going to be a homeboys basketball game at, in the new, newly renovated gymnasium. So that'll be exciting and, uh... Oh, is it gonna be at the junior high now? Oh, we are not moving it there. Okay. What's the first date we're in there, Mr. Bednarzki? Oh, so we got, got pushed back. I missed that. All right, that's, okay. And then, so that one I didn't get. But, um, anyway, and then just a quick comment about Jerry Melvin. I met him when I was, became superintendent at Lynn Court. And, uh, he actually was here at North Syracuse. And, uh, he was someone, when he spoke, uh, around the table with OCMBOSIS superintendents, everyone listened. And, uh, I figured out if I sat next to him, I could always pick up a few, uh, good pieces of knowledge from him. And he was a great mentor. So a wonderful man. And, um, he was one of the reasons I was intrigued by this district and actually wanted to come and sit here in front of everyone today. So. I truly will miss Jerry and I know everyone else will, so.
Board of Education comments.
No, I just, I'd just like to piggyback on Mike Coles', um, comment. I went and saw Harvey too. I thought it was great. Kids did a great job with it. Um, obviously it takes some adults in the background to, to make sure everything goes smooth and everything comes together. But I, it looks like the kids really worked hard. I enjoyed it. It was a fun night.
It's gonna be very difficult. And I wanna thank Pat Carbone. Um, I have the privilege to be on the board when he was president. And, um, he and Dr. Melvin were very, very close. I wanna go through some things that maybe you didn't know about Dr. Melvin that I got to learn over the last years. He was born on May 29th, which happened to be the same month and the day of the month that JFK was born, May 29th. He got the opportunity, as he told me, to meet him when he was a student at Holy Cross and Kennedy was a young congressman. And he always, had always stuck with him, John F. Kennedy. He read all the time. I've, every book he would tell me that he was reading, I couldn't keep up with it. And he read a lot of biographies. Um, and definitely history was his main thing, being a former history teacher. Every day, he read the Wall Street Journal, read the New York Times, but he wasn't pleased lately with the New York Times. Very, very faithful Catholic, great Christian, um, who attended the cathedral every single Sunday, uh, in downtown. He also was a proud Marine, very proud of his service with the country. Many, many Marine friends that lived locally. And he looked forward to every year going to Lakeshore Elementary for Flag Day as we honored our flag. He started what was called the Career Academy at BOCSIS. Um, I was just on the school board here in North Syracuse, but, uh, Kesa Farada, Brayton, and also Dr. Melvin invited me. This was a program for struggling students. He believed every student could have the best education, no matter their behavior. We all have children that just don't follow the, the path that most do. But let's give them the opportunity. Being on the BOCSIS board now, I have seen this program grow to be one of the best that OCMBOSIS programs has today. Because of Dr. Jerome Melvin. He loved attending CNS high school football and basketball games. On Friday nights after the games, he and his wife, another board member and wife and myself, would always go to Twin Trees and he would have that fish sandwich. He loved it. And Sundays, he also, after church, would go into the community restaurant on Route 11 and have his breakfast with the community. As superintendent, he visited schools all the time, very, very, um, present. He went to every classroom. A lot of administrators will go to the schools and they'll meet with the principal and they'll meet with the department chair. Jerry Melvin went to every classroom if he was in the school. He spoke not, to not only the teachers and students. Everyone knew that Jerry Melvin, or Dr. Melvin, was the superintendent of North Syracuse Central Schools. He also loved, and I know you have to do this, meet with the teachers once a mo-, month. They had a lot of grievances and they would let him have it, but he loved it. He loved listening to their concerns. One story I wanna talk about at Bear Road, um, was I was a fourth-grade teacher and I knew Dr. Melvin would come around either the first or second day of school. I said, "Boys and girls, this gentleman is tall, he's got a little gray hair. Please, he's the superintendent of North Syracuse Central School District." Well, sure enough, he came into my room, came into my room. Pat will know Carl Siley, the principal, who was elderly to Dr. Melvin. And I said, "Boys and girls..." And they go, "Mr. Crabtree, is this your father?" "No, no, no, no." And I said, "Do you have another guess?" They said, "Is it Mr. Siley's father?" So that, that's how good a teacher I was back then. He also wrote a weekly column, Pat knows this, every week in the local Star Review. He sometimes talked about his dog in the, in the, in the review and how his dog decided if there was a snow day. Um, and he would meet with the Star Review editor in his office every Friday afternoon. When I became a school board member in 2009, I learned more how much he really cared about all the employees, parents, and students. After he moved to Texas, we began speaking or texting once a week. He would love to tell me the stories about his entire career from New England and New York schools. He loved people. He loved his... He loved people. He loved, as Pat said, seeing leaders and developing people. He was an interim at one time at my alma mater, Anadaga Central, so I loved to talk to him about the Tigers. He spoke of the beauty of the South Anadaga scenery. And Michael Hart, if you are a sports person, he was an outstanding running back. The other day, Rob Price, the superintendent of OCS, said to me, "He was the superintendent of all superintendents." But he was more than an educator to me. He was my friend. Was there when my parents died. They died within eight days, and he was there for me. He called me personally, see how I was doing, came to my classroom. And when my tragic death of my brother seven years ago, even though he was in Texas, he called me every day to see how I was doing for a month. I spoke with him for the last time about two months ago. And I knew, and I talked to Pat about it, I knew he was not well. I got off the phone, and I was very, very emotional. I will miss his calls and his texts. Jerry Melvin, thank you for always being there for me. May you rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, so I was going to second what Mr. Shido said with Harvey. I know many of us also attended the play, and it was definitely great to see the support from the community members. And speaking of telling the students at the CNS High School, this Wednesday, there's an orchestra and chorus concert at the junior high school. Also, this Friday, it's going to be Conference All-State in Rochester, which is going to have many talented CNS musicians. So just if you know anyone, just give them a good look. And also this Friday, the CNS Music Ensemble will be performing at the Cicero Tree Lighting at 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And on December 10th, there will be a district-wide spelling bee that will have middle schoolers from all over our district along with some junior high school students who can go on to regionals. So also good luck to all the students in our district participating in that. And the Friday before Thanksgiving break, the officers of the CNS Human Rights Club, including me, we drove down to Interfaith Works in downtown Syracuse to drop off the school supplies, and it was a great turnout. I wanted to personally thank Aileen Gleason, who is an English teacher at Gillette Road Middle School. She was here supporting her fellow faculty for the BBT meeting. And we kind of had a conversation, and she sent boxes of school supplies. And yeah, it was honestly more than we expected. So I wanted to thank everyone, including members on the board who supported that initiative. And as I said, I passed out some worksheet like before the meeting. And that's going to be pretty much about our next project, which is going to be called the Give Back, just Give Back Baskets. And it's going to be for just two new families that we're going to be supporting. And yeah, I emailed, I sent out an email about what we're going to be doing. We're going to be collecting stuff like gift cards, just stuff to put together and set up housing if you want to support. You, of course, can follow what it says on the sheet and drop it off to Interfaith Works, or you can, like the last drive, deliver it to Ms. Hayman and deliver it to 251 or 250. And yeah, I also wanted to say condolences to, you know, obviously, Jerome Melvin. It was, this is like a very, obviously, it's a hard-hitting subject for many people. And yeah, I definitely agree that the district is also a very important person. And yeah, that's in my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Move into routine action items. Item A is the consideration of approval of the minutes from November 18th, 2024. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Paul, Amanda, any questions? All those in favor? Unanimous? And I'd like to place B, C, and D together, the consideration of classification of students. Do I have a motion to place B, C, and D before us? Beth, Josh, any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Discussion action items, resolution to create a .5 head unified sports for bowling. Do I have a motion to place this before us? Matt, Xavier, any questions, comments? All those in favor? Item B, adopt bonding resolution to continue to support our structured-for-success capital projects. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Beth and Josh, any questions or comments? I believe this is a roll call, right? Yes? Thank you. Item C, approve the agreement between the North Syracuse Central School District and the North Syracuse Principals Association. Motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Dr. Kramer, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Approve the agreement between the North Syracuse Central School District and the North Syracuse Bus Engineers Association. Do I have a motion to place that? Josh and Dr. Kramer, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Before we move into personnel, I just want to acknowledge some retirement. Veronica Ellsworth, a reading teacher, is retiring with 24 years of service. Michael DeBalsall Jr., an elementary teacher, is retiring with 20.7 years of service. Brian Knoll, an elementary teacher, is retiring with 24.7 years of service. Alene O'Connor, an elementary teacher, is retiring with 30 years of service. William Aldrich, a physical education teacher, is retiring with 31 years of service. Declan Donigan, an elementary teacher, is retiring with 26 years of service. Linda Silva is a library media specialist and retiring with 10 years of service. And Renee Marula is a special education teacher retiring with 23 years of service. So it's always crazy to see the amount of service that our retirees give to our district, and we wish them all a long, healthy, and happy retirement. Need an executive session before personnel? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept Personnel A as submitted? Paul, second from Xavier, any question? All those in favor? That is. And do I have a motion to place Personnel Report B before us? Amanda and Josh, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing one negotiation matter with no action to follow and three personnel matters with no action to follow. Do I have a second? Second from Xavier, any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.